Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Let the record show that today is June 7th. The time is nine o'clock a.m. Ms. Kathy, would you like to lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ma'am, appreciate that. Madam Secretary, would you conduct the roll call, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Candace.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you ma'am, appreciate that. Do we have any amendments to the agenda this morning, gentlemen?
I did. The only thing I would, I don't know if it needs to be on the agenda now, but we discussed and I appreciate both of you bringing this up because it's certainly appropriate allowing the county offices that would like to attend the memorial service tomorrow to temporarily close. I don't know if that needs to be brought issue or not, but...
Good point.
There's a couple of people that aren't leaving and maybe the best thing to do would be to put a sign in the window or the door that says, hey, limited business for...
Limited services.
But come in and see Brenda or see Virginia, whoever's here.
Brenda's on top of that.
I just wasn't sure if we needed to have some kind of...
Thank you for bringing that up.
That's the right thing to do.
Good point. Certainly would entertain that conversation. I don't, I don't know, Clint, what do you think? Is that something we need to formalize in the form of a motion or can we just general consent that?
Yeah, you can just do it then.
Okay. I certainly agree that it's probably fine if we, some people are going to be here, we don't need to lock the doors, but we can inform the public that...
They may have to come back.
That's right. Good, thank you though, that's great. I hadn't thought about that.
Because Kelly's going to be there and that's the part of the business.
Anything else, gentlemen, on the agenda amendments?
Information.
Hearing none, we'll move ahead to audience introductions.
Go slow.
You drew the short straw. Give her time to write it down.
Yep.
Jackie Pubus.
Jackie Pubus, thank you. Okay. I don't believe we have any amendments to approve, so we'll move on to Commissioner Items. Commissioner Prince, would you...
Well, you know, I normally write, write on my agenda all the things I did since last meeting and I'll just read what I wrote. Didn't do anything. That's not really true. I mean, I didn't attend any formal meetings, but I did speak to several people who asked about Washboard Roads and all we can have fireworks. You know, I just took care of normal stuff. I didn't go to any formal business meetings.
Okay, alright, thank you sir.
And Ms. Kelly, I apologize. I owe you my activities for last month. I apologize.
Oh yeah. Did you get my email?
I did, thank you for...
I kind of forgot about it. I would have remembered when I got to those, that part of the minutes.
I apologize, but I will get that done and get it to you.
Okay, thanks.
Cool, good. Yeah, just, I don't know that I have done a whole lot of formal stuff either. Actually, we of course, I just got back from the CCI Summer Conference in Keystone yesterday afternoon, so we, I got back yesterday afternoon, the conference was... When was that? Wednesday and Thursday? Wednesday night, Thursday?
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Tuesday.
Or Tuesday, Wednesday, yeah.
Tuesday, full day, half a day, Monday.
I don't even know what today is.
It all blurs together when you're...
Today's Thursday.
Today's Thursday, so yeah, they had an activity Monday evening and then Tuesday and then wrapped up yesterday. So, I think it was Worthlaw Conference, had some great sessions and talked about broadband, of course, talked about some legislation that the governor's already signed that's now law or will become law when the, when the date gets here. One being the new one-call system for 811 for road loc, or utility locates and it's going to, of course, affect every county when they start blading roads and so it looks like they, they're recommending the counties segment all of their unpaved roads into one-mile segments and then deal with utilities on a per-mile basis as far as submitting a permit and getting a ticket to be able to do work on those unpaved county roads. So that's causing a lot of angst. That was one of the big things we sat in on yesterday. So, anyway, a good, good conference. I don't know that there was a whole lot else formally. I looked real quick at my calendar to see if I'm missing something, but I don't think so from my last meeting, so that's all I have.
Yeah, I didn't have about the same thing. One thing I'll say about the 81800, 811...
Even, yeah.
It's not going to cost the county much to do that. It's going to cost the utility guy. I wouldn't want to be Sangre de Cristo or Black Hills or anybody because they gotta, they have to locate every, everything that crosses a county road and let us know when we apply for that, that 700, or we got 375 miles of road and they're going to have to tell us where everything is. So that'll take time and the big issue they brought up was everybody, every county's going to be asking for it at the same time, so you take 64, you figured it out, 64 times.
Yeah, on the average, 1500 miles a road, that's 96,000 miles of unpaved road.
The utilities, AT&T, you name it, it's all got to tell, locate it. Good news is blading it, it's good for six months and then they, so we don't have to call every time. We, they'll mark it once, then what we'll do is take pictures and then we, that's going to be a requirement for us. That's our own requirement. We'll, we'll tell our boys to take pictures, log it, so we know where it is, so the next time they go out or somebody has to do, we do some digging ourselves, put a call over there or whatever, we know what's there without getting 811. Then you, then you call for it as you do it. Anyway, they'll re-mark it. Anyway, that was interesting. Action 22 I've been working with, I've got to go to a meeting this afternoon down in Pueblo, some board of directors meeting. And nothing big there other than they are working the new legislation, which Tom and I got briefed on in the meeting, a lot of, all the legislative updates, which was interesting, but none of it really impacted us significantly at all. And CCI, I mentioned broadband, we, we sat in that broadband meeting at the end, that was good. And I will be attending the Connect, Mountain Connect, and I need to find the, you got the details on that, Brenda? Okay, so that's all I have for now.
Good. Yeah, we did, we had a guest speaker at one of those, if I may, and I think his name was Frank Cirillo. He was kind of a political analyst and it was interesting to sit and listen to his views on some things. He didn't really come from a Republican or Democratic side, it was just a discussion about this transition with the, all the elections going on and the governor transition.
We're turning the governor, turning a bunch of other...
So that was kind of interesting, not that he spoke directly to the impacts of counties, but I thought that was pretty enlightening for, for some of his observations and then of course got into the national scope of things as well. So, yeah, pretty good, pretty good conference. Anything else, gentlemen, Commissioner Items? Okay, Attorney Items?
I met with Jackie Harvey last week. She, and this is an ongoing thing I always do, she is always dealing with zoning violations, some that she's discovered complaints that are made and her procedure is to send out a letter first of all, but when she doesn't get a response, then she asks me to write a letter. So I wrote several, I think four letters on various violations that need to be addressed. And yesterday I prepared, a while back you agreed to vacate a very short section of road there in Sierra City out by Lake Dewey's and I prepared, it has to be done by resolution, so I prepared a resolution and I guess that's on the agenda for tomorrow and a couple of quick claim deeds that will need to be signed, so that's what I did since our last meeting.
Which wasn't long ago, it was Friday, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir, sorry. Or not, I don't know.
Gary said he'd be like...
Okay. Okay, no problem. Go ahead, sorry. Did you mean that?
No, I was finished, it's her turn.
Oh, well, I was going to ask her to do that while you were finishing up. Yeah, I looked at that stuff and I see it's on the agenda for tomorrow and that's really a follow-up of our previous action.
Right. You agreed to do it, it just has to be a formal resolution to vacate the road right away, our interest in it.
Good, good, good. Any response from Claudia's attorney? Have you heard anything?
No, I haven't gotten anything back yet on that, but I'm sure there will be.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Administrative Assistant?
Um, yeah, I have a couple of things. I got a email reminder from Terry Muntzen over at the fire station and she was wondering about the tower IGA and now that we have a new Custer County Clinic Administrator, if we want to again pursue this IGA for the tower.
Sort of what the intent was, right? Get her in there, a new one and then we look at it.
Yeah. We said we were going to hold off and I appreciate her following up on that because I'd kind of forgotten about it.
Yeah, it's been like a two-year thing.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we'll...
So you want me to resurrect it and send it out to everybody?
Yep, if you don't mind.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind following up on that a little bit.
Okay.
You know, if nothing else, maybe we ought to just send a copy to her, the medical director, and let her look at it before we...
Attack?
Yeah, and just say, hey, you know, we need to get some momentum behind this, but we wanted to give you a copy of it, let you look at it real quick. What do you think?
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think she's going to be brought up to speed on it. I mean, hitting cold with the documents, go, what is this, why are we doing it? Those kind of questions probably need to be discussed.
Yeah, I can schedule a meeting with her.
Yeah.
Teresa Kennedy is the admin over there and she knows everything there is to know about it and she has all the documentation, so she should be able to help her with this.
Yeah, if you'll remind me, I'll shoot her an email and offer to meet with her and at least, like you said, Jay and I agree, and rather than hitting her cold turkey is kind of let her know where we're at and why we're, where we're at and so on and so forth. So, good, okay. Anything else, ma'am?
Um, just, and I think all of you have sort of been informed about this, but about, talking about the AC work upstairs and the fact that nothing works up there and we've got, we, I had Michael Thiem come and look at it yesterday and his opinion was that it was never installed properly. Had Mario come, he got up on the roof last night and was looking for a breaker and he sent his guy this morning because Ed and I looked like all over this building for a breaker that was labeled AC, second floor AC, and there's none. And this Mario's...
I thought the first guy told you the breaker was, oh, it was because it had a 30-amp circuit and a 20-amp breaker or something like that.
Yeah, it's a 40-amp...
40 circuit?
Um, unit and it has a 30-amp breaker.
Yeah. How did, so who told you it had a 30-amp breaker? Somebody must have found the thing.
Um, Thiem. Thiem said that.
He knows where it is.
But it, it's a fuse, it's not a breaker. I don't know. I mean, anyway, Ed's been working with them and Ed went up there with Thiem and then Mario's guy came this morning and tried to find a breaker box and I tried to tell him that we could not find a breaker box and we don't know, but he didn't believe me, so anyway, they couldn't find...
Trust but verify.
They couldn't find it this morning either, so.
Yeah.
And that's where we're at.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, and we talked about that a little this morning, I think, obviously there's been some money spent on those wall mount AC units and some, you know, extensive work done, so I think we need to follow up and at least see if it's financially responsible to pursue that. I would think that it would be, but there seems to be some concern that they were never installed properly in the first place and they cut some corners and I don't know, so...
There's a plasma screen problem.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's a plasma unit, evidently plasma doesn't, it's like plasma TVs, they don't work at elevation, but Thiem said there's a, there's a, like a box or something you can add to the unit to make it work properly at elevation, so.
Yep, we need to pursue it.
It's in process and...
Right, yeah, so we're in the process.
Yeah, I think it's...
Meanwhile, they got the windows open, the fans on?
I think it's reasonable to pursue it just to see where we're at financially, if that's all right with you, gentlemen. Okay, anything else, ma'am?
That's it.
Okay, good, thank you, appreciate it. Gentlemen, I should have brought this up under the agenda. Would you be comfortable with moving our new item of new business up? Since Kathy's here, we can, we've already talked about this MOU, I think it's a formality basically, then she wouldn't necessarily have to sit there for however many...
Unless she's got to earn her...
We have it off at 12:30, I think she needs to wait.
12:30, okay, we'll wait. We expect you to stay here though, you can't leave because...
Wouldn't want to miss it.
That's right. So, if you're okay with that, gentlemen, I'd like to, to move down to new business and talk about the approval of the MOU. So I would turn that over probably to Attorney Clint and Ms. Kathy and certainly we've got the MOU here, so...
Looking through this, it looked like it, and I saw your email too, Ms. Brenda, I mean, this is basically the same one we did originally.
It was all ready to go before, yeah.
It was changing the names and dates and...
I have no issue with it.
Yeah, we were all ready to go until the last minute when the school agreed to be the fiscal agent instead, so I just sat there.
And I did not look up the recording or the draft minutes, but I thought we had voted to approve the MOU with those changes or not.
I honestly don't remember if you voted on it.
I don't either.
No, because I don't even have an MOU at the moment.
Yeah, we hadn't found it.
Because you hadn't seen the MOU, you approved pending being able to see.
Okay, alright. So Chair would entertain a motion then to, to that effect, if so desired?
I'll note that we formalized the memorandum of understanding between Custer County and the Custer County Kids Council, outdated, outdated today, authorizing the county to be the, is it the sponsor agent or the fiscal agent? I never...
It's not the sponsor.
It says fiscal agent is...
It's a pass through. Fiscal agent for the Custer County Kids.
It's a bookkeeper.
Well, second to motion.
So let's, okay, go ahead.
Been moved and seconded to approve the memorandum of understanding between Custer County and the Custer County Kids Council, primarily serving as, the county serving as fiscal agent. Discussion.
Okay, so what did we decide now? There's insurance, was, did we decide the workman's comp covered it and there was going to be a small cost? Do you ever figure out what the costs really are?
Six dollars and 40 cents a year, 20 cents a year.
Six twenty a year.
Six twenty a year.
Was it a year or a month?
Six dollars and 25 cents a year is what it was.
Yeah.
And what else did we figure out? Was there liability or something that was...
They're not housed years, so they're...
Yeah, so I think that was it.
And we figured the time it takes for Donna to do it was miniscule and she agreed.
Yep.
What else did we talk about?
You guys approved it pending seeing the...
Yeah.
Right, seeing the MOU. And so, so does...
I have not seen it. I believe Butch has a copy of the original one, you know, before my time.
I think it's, she ought to look at it.
Yeah, do you have an extra copy?
Yeah, I don't know, I only know the one that we had with the school, which was like a teenager.
Yeah, mine's longer because I charge by the hour.
You charge by the hour.
Charges by the word.
Always where S is in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you put more where S is in.
That's what lawyers do. Further discussion?
So it's, you said we're responsible to, from a budget point of view, to transmit it to who?
Whatever invoices they submit.
Submit an invoice for a service of some sort to be paid through their grant and Donna would pay that.
I mean, you submit, you, you get paid monthly or how do you?
Um, yeah, I submit monthly, my hours and my reimbursement.
That'll go through the voucher system.
Because basically I, I end up kind of paying out everything and then get it as a reimbursement at the end of the month.
And you're aware that, of course, there's vouchers that you just get with Donna or Brenda probably even once.
Yeah, and this year probably we will have that, you know, this past year we're operating such a shoestring. There was only one time I think that something was submitted, it was different.
Okay, good. Further discussion, gentlemen? Comments from the public? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor of approving...
Before you do that, is she good with it?
Does it look the same thing?
I'm, yeah, you know, I mean, it's, it's a pretty simple kind of relationship.
Mm-hmm.
We basically maintain everything, but the grant money's flow through you and it needs to be that so that you are an entity that is auditing and your basic responsibility is to make sure that I'm not submitting stuff that I shouldn't be. And it gets, everything I submit has to be signed off by our chairperson as well.
Okay.
Who signs it on behalf of?
And it goes to the state.
Kids Council?
Is Butch the...
Butch signs on, on my invoices that I submit.
But as far as signing the sample...
The other thing that will happen is that I, we, well, the state monies, I then at the end, after I've submitted and said, here's what needs to be paid and you've paid me, I submit to the state everything. And they have 45 days to then reimburse, but when that particular invoice comes in, we need someone who is a representative of, whether it's the county or whether it's Donna. When it was with the school, we had a school board member who, so I used to just send those invoices to the school board member and it's done electronically, she just puts an electronic signature on it and sends it to the state. So that it says that the fiscal agent saw the invoice that went to the state.
So that's one, who signs this?
Is Butch your chairman?
Yes.
Okay, then I, Butch would be the one to sign it.
I would assume he'll be the one to sign it for the kids.
Yes, he'll be the same for it.
And do you get, do you get a grant yearly?
Yes, in fact, I had a meeting with the state on Tuesday and because we are potentially, based on this meeting, making the change to a different fiscal agent, they've put a hold on submitting our, our grant information because I will then have to submit additional paperwork that makes that change.
Will you get that finalized grant that they have given it to you?
The contract. They send us, yeah, they gave us a three-year grant, but we have a new contract.
Every year, three years?
And the amount changes.
So I'll probably need a copy of that because I would assume that the auditors, since the money's running through us, they're probably going to want to see that, so.
And then we are hoping that we will get notified in mid-August that as of September 1, we will have an additional grant from the Buell Foundation, which we will also need to submit. And I will need to submit new pieces to the Buell Foundation because when we applied for the grant, we were still with the school. And that's basically things, you know, just the link so that they can look at financial stats of the county and that sort of thing.
So I have a question for Clint. This is just a technical question on the MOU. You have here the right words, our fiscal agent with the express understanding, we're not obligated to provide any funding.
Right.
How do we pay Donna? How do we, how do we account for the money we are spending to be the fiscal agent? Does it, does that need to...
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Well, it's, it does cost us time and we're going to, we're signing up to it. Is there something we have to say in the MOU or what does fiscal agent mean? We're going to execute it at our expense, right?
It's, but I mean, you're talking about Donna's...
Sure, well, time to be the, or anybody's time to take the money and do whatever we're going to do to be the administrator for it. That costs time, I'm just...
I just think just naming the county as the entity is sufficient, you know, obviously.
Because that's our normal, whatever we do in normal businesses covered by whoever comes in to do business and this would be one of them, is that how we look at it?
That's how I would see it. Our finance officer is the one that handles all of the financial transactions, we don't have to identify individuals.
Okay, so I was just, that's a pretty, that's a hardcore, no funding means nothing. So I was just curious.
Well, and it says we're not obligated to it, it doesn't say we can't.
Not obligated to provide any funding, yeah.
We're not obligated.
So we can spend our own...
We may choose to do that, right. I mean, if we want to split hairs, that's how I would look at it.
I don't know, just want to make sure that the auditor is happy.
Yeah, I don't think there's going to be any problems where this is worded at all.
Good. Further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the memorandum of understanding between the county and Custer Kids, Custer County Kids Council. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. I will sign that and we'll move that along to Ms. Camper and then if you want, I don't know, would it be reasonable to just ask Kathy to take this and have Butch sign it or...
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, I'm waiting for an email back. I'm either meeting with her tomorrow and...
Has your signature as well?
And hopefully one of you will be at our, you know, meeting on 14th. Okay, I will make sure the email's up. Thank you.
Yeah, I've got a conflict too, but I might be there for the first half hour or so, so yeah, you take that with you if you don't mind.
That's going to be at the school again? Ms. Kathy?
Pardon?
That's going to be at the school, right?
No, no, it's a back room.
Back room.
Back room, Second Street, yep, yep. Dinner at Bonn. We'll feed you first.
Thank you.
Yeah, top, top parts because it's a kid thing, right?
Yeah, that's right. Hot dogs and...
Marion Williams juice box.
Yeah, juice box, that's right.
Lots of cheese boxes and straws.
Thank you ma'am, appreciate it.
I'm just waiting for it.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll move on then to our staff reports, road and bridge. Thank you, sir, for being here, appreciate it. Bye, darling. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Senator.
Good morning, how are you?
Mary.
Pretty good.
When was that council meeting?
14th, 2, 5 o'clock.
I've got it on the calendar.
5th, 6th and Second Street, back room.
I would never ask you to do this, but I'm going to thank you for doing it, because I did ask. There was one, there was maybe 100 yards on the way to my home that was so bad, 3 miles an hour, I came home yesterday, slowed down to 3 miles an hour and it was smooth, so thank you. And I will never tell you, ask you to do that for my benefit, but I appreciate you doing it.
Was that on 341?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah. It, I was over it several times over the weekend and knew that we needed to give that some attention right now.
Thank you.
Well, and as well, I can tell you that you've made a lot of people up Hermant Road happy, that was a great improvement on that. I've been up to the top because I think you just finished that work yesterday or day before, but it was a little tart and made a huge difference.
Yeah, I wish we could get some rain on it now to seal it back down, it's kind of dusty, but it got it washed, it wasn't bad that we needed to blade it. And then we tried to dump as much water on it as what we could to seal it back down, but we just wanted to do it. We just need some rain. The valley's evident of that.
Did you get the new truck, has it worked?
We got one and it's working great. We're actually underweight on both the front and the tandems on the back, about 15, 1600 pounds, so we're in good shape.
Totally loaded, totally full.
Same tank, huh?
Yeah, same tank. And you can tell that chassis is a different setup, it's so much stronger. It, uh, before on the other trucks, if you loaded them full, it felt like you had an elephant on your back. But these, yeah, exactly. It, uh, but this truck here, these trucks that we're getting are a lot different. Suspension's a lot better, so.
I know you have your report, I just wanna throw this out as well. I did, uh, communicate with Sheriff Byerly about the possibility of adding some speed limit signs up there on Hermit through the summer season to try to slow people down and preserve what work we're doing, as well as would be on any county road. I see it more because I live up there, but, uh, I'm sure there, people are driving them with speed limit on all of our county roads. Uh, and he said he would look into that, maybe adding some extra speed limit signs and patrol that a little more too. So I just think we, if we're gonna fix the road, we gotta do something to try to preserve the condition of the road for as long as we can.
Yeah, I agree. There's several roads where I'd like to add some speed limit signs on.
We talked about it, Shannon and I talked to him about the Oak Creek grade, same way. We gotta throw just a few more so remind them.
Yeah, Oak Creek grade especially because of the curves and the hills and things like that. It's kind of a dangerous route. I don't even like working on that route.
Yeah, you work on it. Somebody flying around a corner.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, would you mind putting those suggestions in an email and shooting it to me? And I will meet with Shannon about that and see if we can formalize that a little bit.
Sure.
I don't know who really makes the decisions about increasing the amount of speed limit signs, but-
It's us.
It's, it's you guys and then he pretty much leaves that up to Roden Bridge and the commissioners, so.
So I'd like to formalize that and move forward with it.
Same way with speed limit signs. I think he, he realizes that, you know, the Roden Bridge is fully aware of what the speed limit should be, you know, based on curves, hills and homes nearby the roadway and things like that. So he kinda leaves it up to us.
Yeah, it's not, it's-
That's on county roads of course, not, not the state roads.
Right, county roads, yeah.
County roads.
Okay, good. Okay.
So a large rain would help you out in tremendous amount.
Frequent and large rains. Our workload is such that we can usually keep up with fifty or sixty percent of our demands on our roads with our maintenance program. But when we don't get help from other nature, that increases to about, I mean, it decreases actually. I mean, we can only keep up with about forty percent of them. Mother nature dictates our workload to a large degree, you know. Yeah, and the winter, you know, through the winter with us not getting very much snow, that didn't help us either. That snow actually soaks into the road and it solidifies the roads to where we don't have to do as much maintenance on them through the winter. But we did as much through the winter as what we do through the summer of war. I mean, it's really hard trying to keep them decent. But it was due to the lack of snow and lack of winter moisture, so.
I have a question about, um, chip sealing. The town of West Cliff, and I'm, I'm making the assumption Silver Cliff also, um, the town of West Cliff I know just authorized, you know, significant expenditure for chip sealing in the near future. And they talked about doing that in conjunction with the county. Is there a formal agreement between the two or how does that work?
It's my understanding, it was just kind of a generalized agreement. I don't think everything was in, in writing or there was a formal agreement. I know Mike Carter contacted me a couple of days ago about it and it was done prior to him coming onboard, uh, as what city manager or whatever his position is with West Cliff. And, uh, he was, uh, he was not sure, so I, I asked some questions and found out that, you know, we've done it, for West Cliff in the past as well as Silver Cliff and, uh, but there wasn't any formal agreement or anything.
Doing the labor part's probably worth it, but are they buying the material?
Yeah, they're gonna buy the rock and they'll, and, uh, they'd probably buy the rock from us for what we pay for it. And then, uh, as far as the labor, I think the Roden Bridge has actually charged them for the labor to do it in the past.
That's what I was gonna ask. I wanted to make sure that the county was reimbursed for the work that it does for either town. I think that's appropriate. Do you think it would make sense to have a, some kind of agreement between the county, an interagency agreement of something to more formalize how that's done? I, I'm not trying to push or bureaucracy. I'm, I'm trying to ask if it just makes sense to, so everybody's on the same page.
I don't think it would be a bad idea and that way when it comes down to the time for payment, things like that, you know, whatever's agreed on in black and white and paper, then, I mean, there's no discrepancy.
Your memory, black and white is much better than-
Well, exactly. I know that we bought some rock for A and S Construction on the east side of Pueblo out of the, out of a pit they got down there. And when I agreed on a price with John Young, who I dealt with with A and S, the agreed price was twelve dollars a ton. While I got the invoice and the mail, it was for sixteen dollars a ton, so anyway. I mean, that's an example. It's always good to get things in black.
Well, there's two ways to look at it. I, I, you're probably right. There's nothing wrong having him writing, but just having him come in here and say it and write and get a record of it is also-
If you had a record, that's fine too. I just, so if we, if someone's memory is faulty, we can always go back and have something to fall back on. That's the only thing I'm concerned about.
Well, then he can, if he's got something in black and white, he can take it to the board and say, this is what the proposal is for.
It's what we've agreed to.
And this is what-
Why don't you have him writing it?
Be all right with me, I've-
Their lawyer would be happy to do it, I suspect.
Okay, sounds good.
I suspect. I, I'll tell you what, if it's okay with, with their, I'll bring it up to Mike Carter and ask him if he feels that that's appropriate. If he's in favor of it, we'll get kind of a draft working between us and West Cliff. And then when it comes down to it, I'll recuse myself, cause I don't wanna act from both hats. But, I mean, this is a cooperative effort, so I'm really not overly concerned about overstepping my balances representing both entities.
Right, and I don't know how often he meets with the board. I think he'd like to get something going so that he's got something to present to him. Cause we're gonna, we're gonna do our chip seal, uh, latter part of July, so I mean, it's, it's a little ways away, but it'll get here quick.
And I think he mentioned that he was gonna coordinate it with the county, so the equipment is, it, it's an ongoing process as opposed to dust off the equipment and use it again at a different time, you know, it's an ongoing thing. I'll get with Mike and suggest to him that maybe we oughta have a writing and I'll get with you. And then when it comes down to approving, I'll just recuse myself just to make sure. Is it okay with you?
Yeah, perfect, thank you, appreciate that. Uh, and looking at your report, I had a question. Line two thirty-one on your budget, uh, April's expenditures, I see we have a, uh, unusual amount there for the cities and towns of ten thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars. Can you tell us what that's about?
Yes, um, the railroad's and Custer County get paid DTF money and as well, so does West Cliff and Silver Cliff. Well, the money funds through Roden Bridge and then our payment, their payments are, are made from the Roden Bridge budget, so.
So that's highway user tax money?
Basically, yeah. And, uh, whatever amount is budgeted is what they'll get paid out.
We have forty-three thousand is our total budget, so.
Yeah, they'll get like four payments. Uh, Silver Cliff is less, yeah.
Okay, good, thank you, appreciate it. Wondering that?
Good question. Um, we're about halfway through the fiscal year. How are you versus your budget? Are we in good shape or?
We are in good shape. I was going over the numbers the other day and I think on payroll, we're under like for thirty-five thousand, projected to get us through to the end of the year. We're gonna be under about thirty-five thousand there. We're gonna be over in a couple of categories like, um, each, public utilities for instance. But part of the reason for that is that, that water leak that occurred over at Sound Cloud. But, you know, overall, I'm, I'm seeing that we're gonna have a surplus at the end of the year. I don't want it to be too much, obviously, but I'll keep it as close as what I can, but we're in good shape right now.
And when is Hermit Road gonna start?
Yeah, it's gonna be the last weekend in September.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I, I've been thinking about that and we may take some heat over that. Of course, a lot of it's gonna depend on the weather between now and then, but there's a good chance, if there's any hay put up in this valley at all, it'll, that'd be right in the middle of that whole thing.
Oh, really? Late September?
Yeah, I just, I'm afraid, last year they put a lot of hay up in September because we had too much rain. This year I think people are gonna try to wait and hope that we get some rain and not, this is just a, just a gut feeling that-
Good news is over time, I think, he's, uh, he's projecting about two weeks. We'll see if he can make it, uh, could go to three. So that's, and that's, you gotta have it warm enough to do it down too, so.
Yeah, I'm saying going past three weeks, but.
Yeah, I just normally, you know, I think our high, really high traffic agricultural use down there would be in August. And I just have a sneaking suspicion we're gonna find out this year it's gonna be in September, but that's just-
Depends on what, if they cut it or they pasture it, you know. Looking at, looking, it's looking bleak right now.
Well, yeah, it is unfortunate. I mean, it's, it's hard to avoid and prevent, so.
Yeah, uh, October, November, I'm sure the road use would be a lot lower, but I don't think we wanna wait that late to do that project, do you?
Yeah, well, that and Dole, they have to have it started. They've got a deadline. Now, that could be adjusted, you know, based on our mild winters, you know. It seems like even in December it's still pretty warm. We could probably do that project in December.
But we gotta get the money.
But I, I'd have to get with Dole and, and find out if that was possible, if we could push it back.
I think that what he, but, and I'll just put words in your mouth that, that, uh, that I got from your thoughts there. As you said, um, Tom, is, uh, we just gotta be ready for making it as quick as we can and deal with public as they come because it could be. Could be, we'll just have to see. Maybe we got time to deal with it a little bit yet. We'll know a little more next meeting, what the weather's doing.
Yeah, you just never know about the weather.
No, and if it continues in this current pattern, obviously the water's not gonna be an issue in Grape Creek. It'll probably be dry.
It's gonna be easy. You'll be able to get in there and do things you couldn't have done otherwise.
Well, yeah, we can save some money on dewatering and things like that, so.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, you don't have to pump anything out.
Just a thought that I'd had is I cross that ridge frequently.
We should work with our farmers.
You doing any mag chloride?
Yeah, my plan is already do the entire six point six miles on Rosita Road in the upper end of, uh, Oak Creek grade, three point four miles, ten miles altogether.
We've said it before, the overall plan is to keep using mag chloride and start building up a base. So it's like Fremont County, you get enough, it's, it, it doesn't wear off as quick and-
Yeah, if you do it one year and then you don't do it for three or four.
Then you're up the creek. It's just wasting it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the residual effect goes away, whereas if you do it continually. That and if you do it, you know, like on Rosita Road, one of the reasons I chose Rosita Road is it's, uh, it's almost thirteen miles. Well, it's almost thirteen miles from our shop, when we get water from our shop to work on the road. But if we go out to the lake, which we're doing right now, you know, that adds an additional ten miles round trip. So if you, if it's even five miles one way from town, out to the lake, and then an additional twelve or thirteen, or eighteen miles from town. So it's difficult to work on that road when our water source is eighteen miles from where the road is. So I like to put the mag chloride on the roads that are furthest away from our water source where it costs so much and it takes so long to maintain.
It takes on any last one.
Yeah, it makes more sense to do that than to do the ones close to town, nearby our water source where we can get them repaired fairly quickly. Because we're close to our-
Can I ask the rest of the question? The cost of continuous maintenance on these roads, have we ever done a cost benefit analysis in terms of what would it cost to pave the same road and how long it would take for the additional cost of paving versus the annual upkeep? Did we ever look, I mean, would it make sense to do something like that? I, I don't know.
We could do it, but I think I know what the outcome is.
I asked that question. Tell me how many dollars a mile?
Well, to do the initial, uh, surfacing with chip seal, it takes two coats per mile and each coat is twenty thousand. So we're looking at forty thousand per mile.
Just for testing.
So like Rosita Road, you know, we're looking at almost a quarter of a million dollars to do that, just to do the additional on it. Or the, the initial application. And then it's gonna have to be done like-
Pardon?
Like every eight or nine years after that. And that single coat is gonna be twenty, but even then you're still looking at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you know, after eight or nine years.
But you asked the right question, Jay. Matter of fact, last fall, I don't know if you sat in it, I think Tom may have part of it. Uh, I did, that the Roden Bridge came up with, there's a, they did a study, they, they showed all the Roden Bridge guys, how to take a look at the car count on the roads. And just because a certain road might have a lot of squeaking because there's, you know, and it might be a short one and, and it's easy to run out there and braid it, it might be worth under, having the public understand, we're not gonna do that right now. We're gonna go over here and we're gonna fix this road. And fixing it means fix it, so it's not just blading it. It's putting mag chloride down and chip seal or something so that you get, they did cost, there's formulas that they presented and I believe talked about it on what to do, um, and how to make that cost trade. But the county's gotta have the money to make the cost trade if we're gonna do it. Otherwise, he's doing the right thing by prioritizing the ones he can get to and get the ones that are closer to do the quick turn on and then go spend the money on mag chloride further out, uh, because it'll last longer. You, you don't have to hit it.
I guess my question really was, um, and, and I appreciate what you're saying, and, and obviously we've gotta take the most used roads and keep those the best. But I guess the question I had and, and that's my naivety, you know, would it take to go ahead and pave the road if we've had the money? Would it be a, a ten-year payout so we wouldn't have to continuously put mag chloride and all the rest of the bleating and all that stuff? I mean-
I could find that out for you. I know-
And I'm not asking to do a whole bunch of work. I, I asked this question and, you know, that was what I was told is-
And what I'm seeing with the money we've got to work with, we've got forty-one miles of chip up here in the West Cliff area. And then we've got six miles down in the Whitemore area, forty-seven total. And you have to do around six or seven miles a year. And based on the number of miles that we've got right now, we're able to afford to barely maintain what we've got now as far as chip, with the money we've got to work with. But if we add more-
I guess the question I'm kinda thinking of, if you went ahead, what would it cost to pave Rosita Road? Okay, from beginning to end. I know it's halfway paved and then it turns into dirt later. What would that cost be versus say ten years' worth of maintenance? So I'm assuming once you put the paving down, the maintenance is minimal and that again could be a false assumption. But if you went ahead and gutted up to, to pave the whole Rosita Road, how long would it take saving the mag chloride and the bleating and all that stuff to be break even on that?
I think based on the fact that you wouldn't have to go back for eight or nine years and we wouldn't have to do that maintenance on that road, which is quite a ways from our water source, you know, where our equipment stationed, to things like that. I think it would pay to do it, but that initial quarter of a million dollars is the issue.
And that's just for the chip seal. You gotta prep the road.
Yeah, that, the prep itself is gonna take another probably twenty-five thousand dollars. But, um, I'd love to do that and not have to keep going out there because it's one of those roads.
You still have some maintenance every year on it a little bit, uh, but that's not, that's minimal.
Yeah, I'm probably as the old, age of road increases, you know, you have to, but-
Yeah, towards the end of that nine years, which is usually the life that you can get out of it before you have to put an additional coat on it. The first few years you don't have any kind of maintenance on it because it holds up real good. And then you're gonna start developing little, you know, a few holes once in a while and you're gonna have decent shoulder and it'll break out.
That's something to think about, but as we pri, especially as we're going into a budget cycle, we gotta prioritize the money we have on the things that we, we know we gotta do, but, and there are certain monies that is obligated to Roden Bridge only. And we can, and rather than, and, and my goal is to, uh, spend every dime that the taxpayers expecting us to spend on roads.
I agree with that.
And we can cer, and that's what Gary had been talking about, is to invest it right now in the mag chloride. We haven't been doing it at all.
I know, I think-
And then the other one, the chip seal's not a bad idea. If you pick it, you gotta pick a good, hard maintained road and make sure we're taking it and used. And maybe the Rosita Road is the right one.
I think Rosita Road would top the list.
Or Oak Creek, Oak Creek's another one.
Yeah, that's-
Anyway, it's good, good to study. I have a question on cattle guards. You, you mentioned you maintain the cattle guard here last week. What'd you do, just out of curiosity?
What do we do on them?
Yeah, what do you do?
Oh, occasionally somebody will knock a wing off of one. We'll have to go back out and repair that. And then, uh-
Foundation?
Could give away. And then when our motor graders are maintaining these cattle guards, you know, blading up to them, they might slough some material in them.
Did we build those cattle guards? Are we responsible for them as a county?
Yeah, I couldn't tell you honestly, I-
So my question really is, there's a couple of roads with right of ways, uh, that we opened back it up like down there by, uh, Carita. And people are driving back and forth and there are people that would like to pasture the, their forty acre pieces that are in it. Who's the county, who's responsible to throw that cattle guard in?
Um, I think the county has been in the past.
What's the cost of it? This is just, don't have to answer it, but we could figure out what we're gonna do.
The cost of the cattle guard alone is like fifty-six hundred dollars.
That's not too bad.
And then, uh, I know there's certain roads, I think the county has held the landowner accountable. If they wanted a cattle guard in a particular place, they made the landowner-
Right, but if it's not, if it's internally on his right of way probably.
Well, this was even on the county road. I can think of two fifty percent.
No, I mean crossing the county road, but how did they just, we're, we're, we can talk about that later, but that's some questions I've been getting. And there's another right, uh, even I think we're gonna be faced with something on Claudia's place type of trip.
Oh, as far as the cattle guard up there?
Probably.
Oh, really?
They're pastoring some of that out there and she wants to run her own horses and, um, we can't have a gate in there.
Yeah. Well, I think it should be left up to the landlord or, I mean, if we catered to everybody that-
No, we can't.
Felt like they wanted a cattle guard, we'd lose half our budget putting cattle guards in.
Maybe we, uh, maybe we maintain them.
We have a precedent with that discussion when we talked about Dr. Hamilton's property. We, we, so we have a precedent that we've discussed and I think you're probably right. I mean, if we put at our expense cattle guards where people wanted it, we'd bust our budget, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think it should be up to the landlord to fund the cattle guards that go in the county roads. Yeah, I think it should be up to the landlord there to fund the cattle guards that go into county roads. And be selective as far as where we put them too. We don't wanna put them, even though a person might have the money to, to fund a cattle guard, we just don't wanna sock them in everywhere because they, it is difficult for us to.
Agreement between us and them that we have to work out. I guess it's different at every point.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. I learned a lot this morning.
Anything else, Gary?
Uh, let's see. Yeah, I was just gonna bring you up to speed on the roads that are gonna get a chip this year. It's gonna be, uh, Copper Gulch, there's three point two eight miles on it. We're gonna do that. It's due to be done. Then Oak Creek Grade, there's two point five nine miles on it. We're gonna do that. And then Muddy's one and a quarter mile. We're gonna do that. And then we're gonna.
That where it was before?
Yeah.
We're gonna start on Muddy, you're gonna start at Willow and go west or? Tom start at the end of the asphalt?
We're gonna go at the end of the asphalt and just do an overlay on what's we've got out there now on muddy. We're not gonna do anything additional.
Nothing new. These are overlays.
No, this is just something to preserve those roads and not lose them because of the condition they're getting in. And I think that, uh, I think that Herb is probably on the schedule for next year because it's getting, you can usually base, you can, you can determine when they need to be done by the amount of time you have to keep going back out there. And you can walk a road.
You're gonna have to do some of it near the culvert that you're putting into as we do it, right?
Yeah, we're gonna have to do a little bit right in there, but, uh.
What, if any, would be your plan on muddy roads from Willow going west? Yeah, I know there was some material put in there as an experimental thing. That road is in terrible shape.
I think.
That gray crushed grant or concrete mix, whatever that was that went in there. That's in rough, rough shape.
I think we need to go in there with what we call griz material. It's a cheaper material that's just been run through a grizzly, maybe build the base up a little bit and get it so that it doesn't pump water, you know, get a barrier between where it's pumping water and the road surface itself and then go in there with some road base and put on top. And I think we'd be in pretty good shape.
You know the material I'm talking about, that little stretch where they put in that crushed aggregate, whatever it was several years ago?
Yeah. Yeah. Well.
Chance you might look at it.
Okay, I will. Yeah, that's what my plans are on it. I think that that would take care of some of the issues there.
Okay, good, good. Okay.
Thanks, Gary.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you guys for all the work.
No, you're welcome. We'll do more, but we're doing what we can.
You took your time to write your plan.
Not lately. The one time I did write it, I got caught in a hailstorm and it used to wet more. I had to take refuge in a gentleman's house right along. Fortunately, I had a car for it.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next on our agenda will be.
Man.
The landfill and recycle report.
Morning.
How are you, sir?
Good.
Good to see you, man. Things going okay?
Yeah.
Good. Good. Sounds like we're moving ahead with some projects out there, huh?
Yeah, um, I'm trying to get a scraper and there's not one available. I've never had so much trouble getting a scraper for. Usually when I, um, try to order one that's ready, I mean, I never had a problem, but they're just also busy right now. Can't find one available and they wind up in price too for renting.
Oh, I wonder if there'd be a chance of a neighboring county would have one we could rent?
Uh, I don't know. I don't know. I have never really thought about it because of the maintenance part of it probably. Scrapers, boy, if something goes wrong with them, it's pretty costly.
How many cubic yards scraper are you looking at?
Twenty-three.
You need it for what, Rusty?
To continue that trench that we're digging.
Gonna go to the west.
Right. So last year I had it for a month and I went four hundred feet. So if we could get that much done again in a month, it'd be really helpful.
Does the trial weather help or would you do scraping? The ground being as dry as it is, is that advantageous or is that a detriment?
No, it wouldn't be a big problem. Cut through that first little layer of hard crusted material and then it goes really good after that.
So who'd you check with? Just the boys in Plow?
Caterpillar.
You don't know?
They're the only ones that have that, that kind of a scraper.
Do they reach up into Denver?
Yeah, last year it came from Albuquerque.
Yeah.
So they look, they look in all the adjoining states. They look all around. It'll come up, but I just wanted it, you know, now instead of later.
Um, I think I've asked you this before. Where would you stockpile this material? You gonna make a round trip with that scraper and stockpile it to the south or?
Yeah, so what we do is strip the top soil and stockpile it to reuse to put on the caps and then reseed it. And then the clay, we have to use that material to cap these pits with, which takes four feet of clay to cap them. And so I have to separate that. And then all the pit run, we just stockpile it wherever we got space. Last year we went through the fence on the side of road and bridge over there and stockpiled a bunch over there, which is close to our pits and so we can retrieve it very easily.
So the clay, are you, are you gonna put it around and cap as you go or are you gonna?
That's what I used to do.
Later.
And it worked so great because I'd just be digging a trench and then I'd go around and dump it right on the pit that we're capping and just keep going around and it really worked well. But now we have to get the big rocks out of it. So that's why we have to put it all through the grizzly. Slowed everything down and it's like, you know, seventeen thousand yards, four yards at a time with a loader bucket.
Pretty slow.
Yeah, it's pretty slow. And they gave us eighteen months to cap these pits when they're closed. And so I wrote a letter to them telling them this, we can't do this in eighteen months. It's impossible. And so we took it out to five years.
I know I've mentioned this before and I keep coming back to this thought process. Certainly don't, don't have the insight into all of it. No chance of getting a D nine or a D ten in here and blowing everything out to the west. Just stockpiling it. Of course, separating the clay and the pit run.
Yeah, you know, you could, you could do it. You still have to, you'd still have to move the
Clay.
Top soil and then the clay, you'd still have to get the load over there to stockpile it somewhere out of the way. And then that pit run, you'd have to move it too eventually because it'll be in your way.
As you go.
As I go west.
How much further west?
We're about a quarter, see those pits are a quarter mile long. And so we did four hundred feet last year. This year hopefully four hundred more, so. But that's, that's every day, all day on a scraper to get.
That's a pretty good price on this scraper too.
Yeah, I was getting it for eighteen. And then I had the, the extra two thousand for shipping. That's why I had twenty thousand in a budget. But Mike Lewis, our salesman at Caterpillar retired. And he's the one that was giving us the good deal for years. And so things changed a little bit. And they actually want twenty-four thousand for him. But they say, well, we'll give it to you for twenty thousand seven hundred. Okay.
Yeah, well, do what we gotta do, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
It's a matter of waiting now until we can get a crack at one or?
Part of the deal.
And you had this budgeted all along?
Right. And we got that trench surveyed too, about four hundred feet that I dug last year. And so then you send that survey to the engineers and the engineers put their stamp on it because if they think it's okay. And then they send that back to me and then I, with a cover letter, send it to CDPHE so they can approve it. So we can start putting trash in there someday in the very near future.
Good.
So it's all a long process. You have to go through so many channels for just about everything. That's why it's so.
Silver Cliff has more tires than West Cliff, didn't it?
I saw that.
Yeah, I never, you know, I, I budgeted for maybe a hundred tires for a cleanup day.
That one looked, Sonny had, looked like it had more than a hundred on it. That was a huge.
A lot of tires.
Well, Sonny turned in his tires, didn't he?
I think he was picking them up for.
Yeah, he volunteered.
Really?
Yeah, I've been getting some requests about this very subject, so I'm gonna talk about that.
Go ahead, Jay. I, I was just gonna ask, you say that the landfill pays for the tire disposal reimbursed by the towns, but the money doesn't come back to landfill. Does it just go to the general fund?
Yeah, they'll, they'll send me, the towns will both send me a check for the tires that they brought out. And then I just take those checks to the treasury and back to county general goes. Yeah, we don't gain any extra money during the year. What you have budgeted is what you have and you're not gonna gain any.
At your disposal of the tires, you send them to somewhere else, right?
Yeah, some people, Interwest Tire come up and they recycle.
For the tires.
They charge you for that?
No, we pay them.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, we pay them for that.
So it would seem appropriate out of your budget that the money that you pay to have them disposed of properly and the towns pay you, it'll go back to your budget, not to the general.
Rusty, what'd you charge them for? You charged them.
Yeah, yeah, we charge the towns. We charge them what we charge everybody, four dollars.
Enough to cover the cost of paying the guy to take them.
Yeah, see, we charge, just like everybody else, we charge everybody four dollars for a passenger tire.
And that covers our cost to pay somebody to get them.
Right.
So we are getting that paid for.
Right, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
It works out. I did, it just stretched my tire budget, what I had in there because I didn't realize there was gonna be so many tires. So I think that the people in the county are probably bringing them in.
Sure, I know. Here's our chance, man. Uh, I, I get what you're saying, Jay, and I thought the same thing. Now, if we approve your landfill budget and it has money in there for tire disposal, it's almost like a pass through eventually. But if you take an extra hit above and beyond what you budgeted for.
He budgeted for a hundred and he basically two hundred could recycle. He shouldn't, it shouldn't impact negatively his budget because we agreed to, for the, for the county to take the tires.
But it won't because he's charging the towns for those tires. So you're getting that in.
He's getting it back, but it's going into the general fund, Jay.
Right, right.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Well, yeah, I, I say he's getting it. The county's getting it.
The county's getting it back and then.
But I probably, you have a little surplus at the end of the year in case you needed something. That's what I'm concerned about.
See, that's something that we need to talk about in the budget meetings we're gonna have because in fact, we should be looking at everybody's lines and then making sure they, we pass things to the right priority as the year goes by. So as long, as long as it's there and if he did come up short, that's what we would do next month if, for example, he.
And I'd love Rusty, because look, I have excess in my budget, which this would add to.
Sure.
Um, and here's what I'd like to do with it, you know, fix something that's been longstanding broken or whatever. I mean, you.
You wanna return it back to the general fund or?
The worst thing that can happen in my experience is, is you have a line item and, and he, and one guy's really saving money and he's got a big surplus. When we hear this guy sucking wind and trying to do things and in a vacuum, that's what our job is to make sure we make the trades early enough to, so that guy's not doing something irresponsible in his short form.
And I agree. And, and you also said earlier, and I agree with this statement completely, road and bridge needs to spend every penny they have. The public is paying.
And they're, they're specific for that.
Road and bridge. That needs to go back into road and bridge, you know, so I hope they come out with pretty close to zero at the end of the year. But I understand if you had, you, let's say you had a fifteen thousand dollar surplus and you came to us and said, look, I need to upgrade or whatever, you know, instead of being in the general fund and ask us to transfer general fund back to landfill, I know I would be, it'd be more palatable to me if you said, I have excess funds. I'd like to use it for something in landfill. So it just kinda makes sense to me that keeping the, the revenues and expenses in the same, um, uh, entity makes sense to me.
Right, if you can. And then, but if there's a crisis in another one, the excess goes right over.
Well, that's, yeah, that's probably a conversation that's needed, uh, not maybe appropriate for this report from landfill, but something we definitely gonna have to, uh, talk about. So, uh, town of Silver Cliff has requested that we would consider reducing the, the price that we charge them for their tires. Particularly this year because the number of tires.
Well, this is what I, I told the town of Silver Cliff when I presented them with our bill, is that they could get Interwest tires to come, if they just stored all their tires at their shop or somewhere where they have a little space. If they just got all those tires and stored them there and called Interwest Tire to come up and get them, they would come up and get them. And it'd be a heck of a lot cheaper for them.
Why is that? Don't, don't we pay the same thing?
We charge more, Interwest would come up.
What's your pass through charge? What, are you labor to handle them or what?
Yeah, we have to deal with them. If there's dirt in them, we try to knock the dirt out because they don't like dirt in them because it messes up their machines and so on.
So you pass that into Silver Cliff and let them beat their tires?
Just that, if they're having a cleanup day, their tires that they collect in their town, they could store them in their town, they could call Interwest to come up and pick up their tires. They would come up and get them. And it'd be a heck of a lot cheaper than we're out of this, they were out of it all completely. Then alls they're doing is just bringing out their trash and we're not charging them for it and all is sold.
Sure.
Yeah, and I voiced this concern from day one about these town cleanup days. I get it that it's a valuable thing, but I also think we're opening ourselves up for that thing of transporting tires from all over the county because they're expensive to get rid of.
Yep.
Why not come in the night before and drop six or eight tires off on a corner of a street and be done with it? And I think that's probably why we seen this.
What do you view, no doubt about it?
So I, I would guess maybe in the long run, I agree with what you're saying, that we probably need to stick where we're at. Let the towns deal with these tires. If they wanna offer tires, then.
Yeah, you're being reasonable. You're not charging them.
Right. It'd just be a lot cheaper for them to do it. We're being a middleman, basically, for the whole process.
Labor to handle them.
Yeah. When they could actually do it themselves and be, be done.
Well, they, they could get some volunteers to do that. Good for nothing.
Okay, well, I will communicate.
It's not that many tires.
This conversation with.
It's that many for you, but I'm saying they could get some volunteers to handle that. Make some money.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming the general consensus is we're not gonna discount the cost of the tire.
What was the total bill, just out of curiosity? For Silver Cliff? What are they squeaking about?
Roughly two hundred times four, eight hundred bucks.
Yeah, there you go.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, plus mattresses. So we charge five dollars for mattresses.
Do you have much mattresses?
Yeah, quite a few. So their bill was probably.
They say, just wanted to know if we can consider giving them a break?
Let's just give them a fifty dollar break in much.
I mean, honestly, I. You know, I, I would have a problem if the general fund, since we have this surplus that's coming back, if the general fund allocated say two hundred dollars towards Silver Cliff or reduced, we would supplement their expense by two hundred of the general fund. Just to help them out. I know they don't have a ton of money over there.
You might wanna talk to Donna about surplus.
And then.
Thank you. I agree with you.
And then my feeling is if we do it for Silver Cliff on a percentage basis, we're obligated to do that on West Cliff.
I don't think so.
But they, West Cliff hadn't come to me and asked me to throwback, but.
West Cliff has, has lots of money and Silver Cliff is, is, is a little bit, it's a little bit more difficult. They don't have the grocery store and stuff.
You could say we'll consider.
What's our cost to have those tires picked up?
They're raising the rates because everything's going up. But, uh, the last time that they picked them up, they were a dollar fifty for a passenger tire. Where the majority of the landfills around the state charge five dollars and up.
That's not going question we've had over the years. That's not going question, we've had over the years is what's our fee versus. It's a whole different animal, I'm not trying to bring that up, it's just to think about it.
I don't know, that that seems like not a lot of money, uh, for Silver Cliff to be asking for, I don't know what kind of break they think they need, it's pretty tight.
You've already submitted your invoice to Silver Cliff and West Cliff.
Yeah, there I do.
Have they paid it?
No.
So they tell Silver Cliff in the middle of the night, when no one's looking, I'm cleaning up, daddy, you're gonna rub your tires over to West Cliff. All right, take that out of the record.
Well, I just told Buck that I would bring it up at our meeting for discussion if if we wanna to. Chair would entertain a motion if so desired that we could resubmit an invoice to West Cliff at a lower amount. If that's, or to Silver Cliff, thank you, if that's what you wanna do, I just told him that I would bring it up, so.
I think it's a nominal amount, I think there is a good solution, the one you suggested to him for the future. I mean. We're not talking about enough money where if it.
That's the problem.
I would say, let's not open this can of worms, this is my opinion.
Yeah, I think maybe we ride this situation this year.
We're just helping with some good advice to do it themselves.
Suggestion to them for next year and.
Yeah, cuz I'd like to help them out too, you know, any way we can, I'm not against trying to help the towns out.
Well, we've taken in all their trash for free, correct?
Right, right.
It's not like we're not helping out.
Right.
Pretty big deal.
I just think there was an increased spike in the number of tires that raised the alarm.
People around the county are starting to get it figured out and.
You know, why is it not?
You could do an in kind kinda thing, we could give them an extra, uh, bring out some more trash instead of paying for it. Take up, take another load of trash.
I don't think we should do anything.
I think we're good in the way it is.
Anything else, sir? Looks like we're getting ready for some another cardboard shipment, huh?
Yeah, we do, we have plenty of cardboard, Dennis is taking a little vacation, so we won't ship any until he gets back. But we were actually up. About five thousand dollars in May. From the year before. It's getting busy around here.
Yeah. Growing pains.
Right, growing up in landfill.
That's why we gotta keep hammering away on this expansion, huh?
Yes, sir.
We just gotta find the money to do that somewhere, that's all there is to it. The good thing is, we probably, I don't know that we'll have to to expend those dollars before the end of this year.
Right.
Maybe next year, which gives us a chance to massage that budget a little bit.
Yeah, we need to do that, and then we need to be socking away like we thought we might be doing for the new pits back in ten years from now. Bag cost, surplus or whatever, we'll talk about that later.
So when do you do that, if you if you change it to where the landfill had a fund balance?
We need to talk.
Yeah, we got a budget meeting scheduled at the end of the month of June with the auditors, we're gonna talk about that very thing.
And try to get a process.
Plan.
Yeah, cuz Sam DiNardo's talked about it before too, so.
Yeah, and that's who we're gonna meet with for a budget meeting, so.
Perfect.
We will put that on the agenda and it'll be a discussion countywide, but certainly.
Right.
Uh, landfill is near the top of that list to say, we we need to do something about these funds, that's all there is to it.
Okay.
Tires being a great example. That, for lack of a better term, I call it a standalone budget, you've got your budget, if you buy and sell out of your budget, that money stays in that budget. It doesn't get lost in the general fund, how else are we ever gonna create a fund balance to cover the cost of the expansion of landfill? Per million or whatever else, so those are the kinda conversations we're gonna have with that.
Yeah, these guys, these guys at the landfill spend a lot of time cleaning aluminum, getting all the metal out of it. So it's clean because you get a heck of a lot better price for it. So they spend a lot of time doing that to get the better price and the more money for it, so it'd be great to have that.
You're adequately staffed out there, I'm assuming?
For now, yeah, I think we're we're probably okay, everything is just a slow process, moving material.
Yeah.
The way we have to do it, and when they come out to drill those wells, I thought we were gonna be inspected by now, but they haven't came out. I think they're pretty happy with us, but when they come out to drill those wells, I'm sure Jill will be there, our permitting person. And I'm gonna have a long talk with her when she's out there about this grizz and all this material, getting those rocks out. Because I think if they don't find anything, any contamination in their wells, what's the purpose of getting the rocks out of there?
Get the rocks out, don't need to.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you keep us posted, man, I just think.
We gotta speed things up.
That. I could be overstating, but I think every time those people come out, if they see some commissioners out there as well. I just got a sense from those people that they appreciated that, if you'll let us know, man, we'll come out and and just be there. We don't have to be an integral part of the process, but just to let them know that you're not out there fighting the war by yourself. And that they know we care as commissioners and.
Goes the wrong way.
Yeah, so just keep us posted, say, hey, these guys are coming out next Thursday, can you be here, we'll be there.
Not to slow anything, we making any methane, they finding anything out there?
Yeah, uh, the first quarter of the year, or actually, I think it was December when I was out. Never ever detected any methane. And so I was on the north side of the of the pits at our gas probe over there, the one by the office was fine, it was clear. So I go to the other one over on the west, or the north side of the pits and stuck my probe down in there and my gas detector went.
Which ones has that, an old pit? How long's it been around?
The gas probe?
No, the, uh, trans shoot.
It's it's on the, it's close to Rosita Road.
Really?
So it's it's on the north side of all the pits.
Where was the first one put in?
South.
So it's not making anything?
We don't know, because there's only a gas probe on the north side, it's up by the buildings, because methane goes sideways.
Yeah. Just asking because somebody up there in the meeting said, uh, they're making tons of money off their methane.
Yeah, and I detected it, first time. Scared me, and so I told.
I don't think we're gonna have a big enough landfill to make much natural gas or anything.
It was five point six percent L E L, so.
Just just.
It's there now, finally, I knew it was gonna happen sometime, just didn't know when, so I called the state and told them, because that's part of our duty, we need to let them know. And, uh, the guy that runs C D P H, he used to be our inspector. And so I was talking to him, he says, well, at least we know your your, um, gas detector was calibrated. So he wasn't too concerned about it, but this last quarter when I did it, it went down to three point three or something. So it went down, it's still up, so it's a good thing. But, yeah.
Anything else, sir?
As long as we don't detect it up by the offices.
Yeah.
I think we're okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Rusty.
Good, Jay.
Appreciate it.
See you later.
Betcha. See you.
You bet.
Take care. Okay, Public Health, ten o'clock, we're a little.
I have a very.
We started out way ahead of time, I'd like to introduce you to Mrs. Live and Good.
I was gonna ask that question.
Well, that's right, congratulations.
Got a big, got a big kick, no hyphenated, this is a good old country girl, ain't no hyphenated in the world we live in, is it?
Or gets cold back.
Um, yeah, I saw your, some of your communications and.
Yeah.
I actually showed one of your emails to Cindy, she got a big kick out of that, so, yeah, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, let's see here, so I have a couple of new programs we just started that I wanna tell you about. Um, Reach Out and Read is a program that we started through the state that is, um. We give a book to every kid five and under that we give vaccines to. And it's actually a pretty sweet little deal because we can kind of assess interaction between the parents and the kids. Like, if we have a three year old or a five year old kid that doesn't know what the heck to do with the book, like, that's problematic, right? So, um, so that's pretty cool, and it's just a, it's free books we get from this Reach Out and Read program.
Cool.
So, started that, I just got the books this week, so I haven't really had a chance to give any out yet, but. Um, and Beth and Carmelina are all trained up to do that too, so, so cool. The other thing is that it's called the baby box, so I wanna, I wanna call it baby in a box, but. Um, but it literally is, it's a big cardboard box with a little mattress in it. And it's for safe sleep spaces for kids, so that people aren't like sleeping on the couch with their babies and rolling over and smothering them.
Oh, I see, you put the baby in the box.
You literally put the baby in the box.
Actually, probably makes very good sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Locals in the box then for years.
Um, it doesn't have a lid on it, so, so that's good, but, good thought, thank you.
Is very compassionate.
Yeah, I can, I can tell that he's like. So, so that's neat, and it also, like, in order to get, and so in the box also comes a whole bunch of, like, hygiene items and things like that for for babies. And the parents have to actually go through a little training, it's like ten or fifteen minutes, in order to get the box. But we've actually already given out two of them, it's also a program granted by the C D P H of Colorado.
Wonderful. How do we get the word out to people that may need that or may not?
So we're putting stuff in the newspaper, I've done, um, stuff on Facebook, you know, unfortunately, that seems like the winner winner chicken dinner.
Yeah, I understand. Does the, does the clinic help?
I know.
Yeah, I don't have a copy either.
Yeah, did you send us anything? Cuz I've been looking for documents.
I did it a while back.
I thought I did, I did, I sent it out kinda early because I wasn't in the office last week.
I don't, I didn't find it either.
I, I may not have gone back.
It was more than a week ago.
It was, yeah, it was like, not last week, but the week before.
And I didn't mean to interrupt you, I was just struggling.
What was the address it came from?
You're fine, um.
I got your hazard meeting emails.
It would have been.
From who?
From Alyssa Magnuson still, cuz it was the week before.
Do you send it directly to them and not Brenda?
I sent, yeah, I send it to everybody.
Can you send one to me?
I sure can, yeah, yeah.
One on the twenty fourth of May.
That sounds about right.
Twenty fourth of May. I don't know if it has that report. Yep.
Well, I should have looked too, and I just.
No worries, and I can send it again, I have it on my, oh, here, yeah, the twenty fourth, the May two thousand eighteen B O C C report.
I've, I must have filed it. So I am looking.
I got it now, sorry, am I false enough, I'm not sure.
Always look at, afford it under Brenda's.
I probably didn't look that far back, I have it.
Okay, I can send it again.
No, you don't need to send it to me.
I'll forward it to you.
I'm looking here, April twenty eighteen, yeah, mine was dated to twenty six.
I'll send it to you.
I've got it, I believe if I'm looking through I want.
It's twenty two.
Am I on that email? Cuz I'm not seeing it in my inbox or my email.
You know.
I'll send it.
Probably wasn't in the pack.
I don't think I did put you on there, Brenda, I'm sorry, let me, I'll do it right now though, I'll send it to you.
Um, yeah, just, you know, usually I resend it with everything else.
Usually I do send it to you, so I don't know what happened, sorry.
Yeah.
Good other things on your way.
Coming to you.
Well, it's not, not anything like a stinking wedding, getting away.
Getting way out of business.
Sorry. Bless you. Um, so we did not get the Shingrich, Shingrich's vaccine yet, that's the new, um, shingles vaccine. There's, they told us that it, like, the suppliers, which is G S K, um, said that it would be here in May, now they're telling us July, so.
Are you offering?
We have a growing list of people that are on the, mhm, yeah.
How do they know?
Um, they stayed on the news. You know, I mean, G S K is the the manufacturer and they're they're putting it out there, of course.
No, I'm asking, how do our people know they're gonna come to you?
That's, that's it, I mean, I haven't really, I kinda hate to really advertise it until we actually have it, cuz. Lots of conferences, blah, blah, blah. I just sent it again to you.
Thank you, it's receding it right now, thanks.
Um, I did get invited, which I think is like a little double edged sword here, to go to Alabama in July.
Yeah.
For a week. I'm like, there better not be a tornado because I'm gonna need air conditioning. Um, but it's the FEMA, it's a FEMA thing, um, for the South Region Healthcare Coalition, it's a three day course to, um. Kind of develop trainings and and preparedness for emergencies, so, um, our region. Got three scholarships and I was chosen as one of those recipients to go to Alabama, so. I'm gonna leave good old West Cliff in July to go to Alabama. Let's see, Carmelina and Beth just went to a shared risk and protective factors conference in Keystone, and that was really good. They came back with some good stuff that we'll put some programs together for, so.
Does this area have a Lyme disease issue?
Mhm.
So we do have those ticks that.
We do have, there is Lyme disease in Custer County, um, we've had two people over the course of, you know, twenty years, yeah. Yeah, so, um, and we've put some, we've put some information out in the paper, on Facebook, um, sent information to all the camps. About like tick prevention and and science. Still look forward for. The Lyme disease, et cetera, et cetera, several things.
So there's a huge, change stuff just slightly, there's a huge uproar about the prairie dogs, which we have every single year. They carry, the concept is they carry disease and diseases can be spread to animals and to people. Do you see a, um. Significant threat of the prairie dogs to our population here, I mean, there's questions of eradication.
So, no, I don't, um, we would have to have an actual case of hantavirus, which is what they're, what they do, what they carry is hantavirus. Um, there was a case like four years ago, I think, in Custer County in the south end of the valley, um. I mean, if it comes up again, it's 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 not like it was in the nineties when it like kills hundreds of people and animals and everything. We have treatments for it, um, same thing, they just need to report it to the, to me, Public Health and, um. But there hasn't been, there hasn't been an issue, so, yeah, there's a lot of prairie dogs.
I know they're horrible for the wild, the domestic, I meant the cows and the horses, stuffing the holes, it's just terrible.
That's the worst thing is the holes that it creates in people's pastures, not to mention that kills all the grass that they, so.
But to people, it's not at this point a significant.
Yeah. Certainly something to be aware of, but, yeah.
Did you talk to the post office bank? Were you involved and to what extent and how'd that go?
So, yes, I was involved, um, went up there, took our Ebola suits, which, I probably shouldn't call them Ebola suits, cuz it wasn't Ebola. But, but it's our, you know, our our personal protective equipment, and we were able to to supply that to the folks that were in the bank. And the post office, um, hazmat, the hazmat team that came from the state patrol said that everything was handled exactly perfectly. To protocol, so, thank you, yeah, and it wasn't, I mean, um, the sheriff's department was was on the ball with that. Emergency management with Cindy, it was just a good team effort. Countywide.
Excellent, yeah, and of course, you made note in your report about the. The approval for us using those suits for other things rather than specifically Ebola, I think, maybe we just call them hazmat suits.
Yeah, let's do that.
Uh, that was nice, thank you for pursuing that, that saved us probably a thousand bucks or more.
At least, yeah, yeah.
So that was great. And I just appreciate your work and. And I just appreciate your work, and.
Thank you. Yep, just keep on keeping on, we have one environmental health issue, a campy, a campy lobacter case here this month, um, debatable whether it even came from Custer County or not, it was tested in Texas, so. It's a non-issue.
Good, sounds good.
Alrighty.
Alright, anything else to witness?
No good.
Hey, thank you, ma'am, appreciate it, sorry I didn't not get your.
I just learned how to spell Magnuson.
I know, well, now you don't have to worry about it.
That's right, now we'll be living good, instead of living good, thank you.
Take care of you.
Yes, let's do, we'll, uh, be in recess for five minutes. Since we got a order, next item of business, uh, staff report from V S O, good morning, sir.
Morning, sir. How you all doing?
Good, good.
Good, good.
See you, Tim.
Good.
Good.
Oh, I know, what, twice one day?
Yeah.
How you doing? Alright, I need to sort it out, um, I just got back with Tuesday, so I didn't get a chance to get Brenda to.
Might be a poor.
Outline, you see, it's pretty short, pretty short.
Shorter the better, Tim.
Likes, I know, and there's the original report.
Thank you.
Then pop these. Alright, so here we are, May was crazy month, um, we start with the state report, this, uh, standard report, uh, forty-four phone calls, thirty-three office visits, um, due to having two surgeries in one month, uh, the office was open only about ten days this month, so, maybe so, so that counts for the low amount of numbers, as far as that goes, so. Other than that, this is pretty much a standard month report, um, nothing really exciting on there. I said, that's always, has to be in by fifteenth of the month, so every six months, the state, the county gets a check from the state, so. That's the purpose of that, okay, um, any questions on, on the report? If there's ever anything exciting on there, I'll definitely highlight it for you, but this, this, it's mainly forms, you know, what forms, we're submitted for what, and claims, and other things that go into the V A, that's the primary issue, okay?
Um. Let's deal with this before we move on.
Okay.
I would move that we accept, uh, the monthly, month of May's report from V S O.
I'll say it.
Would you second it to approve the April report for V S O for Custer County? May, did I say April?
May.
May, thank you, ma'am, um, discussion, gentlemen?
Looks good.
Comments from the public, hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carries?
Aye, aye, I hear it, I was taking a drink when you said. It was unanimous, Kelly.
Okay.
So, thank you, sir.
Why doesn't John?
Regal. John Regal, yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, well, let's go, let's talk about John real quick, that's okay.
I made a jump in.
Nope, that's okay, um, since you brought up, yeah, John's great, um, I mean, Chairman had a chance to, to be there. Uh, John has been a phenomenal, phenomenal asset to this county from Senator Bennett's office. Um, matter of fact, while he's there, he did, after the meeting, at least two or three vets, and who he initiated, Russian crews on behalf, I think that we've been, you know, with the V A, and he's just always accessible to this county, um, like no one, no one else. Um, nothing official, but he is looking at some career, he's, he's only twenty-six years old, sharp as a tack. He, he has got unlimited potential, so, um, but, but he's just been a friend of this county since, since I've been doing this job, and has helped numerous times, and, um, that's how I ended up being on the panel, it's for the Academy nominations last year, and, uh, so, which was a great experience, also, uh, along with Charlotte, we were in the same three-man panel, so that was fun. Um, but it went great, um, turnout was, you know, about, you know, ten to fifteen is always kinda, uh, average for these type of events, but John does a tour, he goes to county to county this time of year, does these meetings, try to get a feel of what's going on, and what's, you know, what, what counties need and help with, and especially with the V A and inquiries and so forth. Um, so, and he's always available to come back, um, he would, uh, due to my situation with my health and some things, uh, we usually try to do two of these a year as well, so, um, so he'll continue, so, I'm here in fall still, we'll do another one in the fall, okay? Um, so, second item, my, just quick health data on me, when, last month, uh, I did the report right before I had, had the hernia repaired, and then, uh, we turned right around, uh, and got in contact with C U, and initial contact with C U was like, first consult was, that was gonna be September, and, uh, so anyways, took, long story short, took a week, week and a half, they triaged my records, the surgeon told the nurse, get him in here this month. And so, tumor was removed a week ago, uh, so, so I had the two surgeries out of the way, and recovery's going good, but it was, um, best-case scenario, it was, I was still waiting at pathology port for the fish report, but as far as the process, he went through a scope, didn't have to cut, so. It was the best case, you know, so, so, that's behind this, and now I can move forward, and should have no major medical coming up, my wife made me promise, so.
So, you're back on full?
Full-time, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Quick recovery, good job.
Yeah, well, but they were able to go through the scope, they moved into the scope, so, um, I just have about six, eight weeks, so, be careful what you eat, which I'm finding out, if I eat something wrong, it just feels like someone punched it in the gut, except I've got a pulse about that big right now. Okay, it'll heal, it's, obviously, by the time you get to die, it'll figure out, it'll be healed, so you're good. So, anyways, that's where we're at on that. Um, originally, I was scheduled to do two conferences, uh, April was the state conference, and due to my dad's passing, I canceled that. And then the national conference, due to the surgery, all of a sudden, they got me in on the twenty-ninth, uh, I got canceled that one. Um, both conference fees are, I got confirmed this week, are being refunded, which will go into the general fund, uh, type thing, but they are refunding both funds. Um, I said, with my situation being a house up for sale, um, I've got three other options, and, and we'll see what happens, if it looks like I'm gonna still be here going, going into the new year, I've gotta go get my sixteen hours of C L credit, so. So, there are three state conferences where the National Association is doing training, that'll meet that requirement, one's in August, one's September, one's in October. So, if we start getting closer to the fall, and when things slow up, then, then I'll probably go to either just September or the October one, okay? Just wanna let you know where that, um, the last thing on my list, Roger Watkins, who the Chairman got to meet, um, I don't think you guys get the chance to talk pretty much, did you? Okay, uh, Roger is something that I've recommended, I've talked to this over Don Hobby quite a bit. And when time comes, I know I am leaving, Roger is willing, is interested in doing, say, two days in, a, a week, maybe two ten-hour days or something. He is fully credited V S O, and he is an accredited agent also with the V A.
Where's he from?
He lives in Rye, he lives in Rye, and so he loves it up here, he loves driving back and forth, he's currently working on his fifty-three Chevy that he's restoring.
Is he working on those V S O?
No, he was tech, well, technically, he was one of, he, he, he was the social director for the V A home in Walsenburg for quite a few years.
But he's not now.
He's not, no.
So, I kind of misunderstood.
So, he is under contract with them, like, for one day or one half-day a week, so he goes down to Walsenburg to help with the, the senior veterans down there. Um, but this is, this is a, I can't emphasize enough, the fact that he's available to be in interim, uh, I don't think, he doesn't think he's interested in applying for the full-time. But my recommendation would be, once I know when I'm leaving, to bring him on two weeks before, just so that be like, handoff and transition some of the records and the cases and so forth, and he'd be more than happy to still continue after you do hire someone, depending upon that person's background and so forth, and if it turns out to be a real green newbie, he'd be more than happy to do for two or three months, to come up a couple days a week and help train, and get that person up to speed, okay? Um, so, it's just something I just wanna put out there, something to think about, um, I've invited Roger to come be here next month, uh, when I do this presentation, so you can meet him, and he'd be more than happy to be here and available to meet with y'all and so forth, just to get background. Um, he would also be, and I've talked with Don about this, and she brought up that, would he be interested in then being part of the interview process, which might be a great idea also, to have him go. Great guy, Vietnam vet, been doing this a lot longer than I have, he's been a great source for me, especially my first year, cause I was learning a lot, uh, he, he was just tremendous source, so.
And we are required by state statute to provide a V S O office.
Yeah, there is, also, the other advantage, and here's the other advantage, of bringing him on right away, a, a, as I transition, if no one's sitting in a chair, then there's no funding for that month coming from the state, okay? The, the funding is, so, so if he's twenty hours a week, that's still part-time, so it would drop in half of those months, but still, half of something is better than.
Keeps pump prime.
Keeps the pump prime, and you get the reports flowing and that kind of thing, and it gives the county an opportunity to look at, like I said, expanding your search, it may be drawing from a, a, a bigger applicant pool, type of thing, so, um, uh, the, the announcement would go out through the state statewide, there may be an already accredited V S O sitting in one of the other rural counties that will not go full-time, who would love to be full-time. So, you might be able to draw some, it's at the state certified, if not the accredited, already, so, so that may give time for the announcement to go out there a little longer and, uh, get more activity in that. That's all I've got, any questions for me?
No, I didn't like your idea of inviting Roger to the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, he said he'd be more than happy to come, so, it's, uh, as long as it's not, and Brenda told me it'd be Thursday, you guys have something going on that week again, so. Uh, cause Tuesday's when he's gotta go to Walsenburg, so any day but Tuesday's good, okay?
Excellent.
Alright, thank you, appreciate it.
Have a good afternoon.
That's the plan.
See you later.
Alright, I'll be here.
Heal it up.
Feeling better? Yeah, that's good, that's huge.
Stay away, I said stay away from spicy stuff, which is okay. I'll see ya.
Okay.
See ya. What's next?
Uh, Laura's on her way.
Laura, yeah.
Have you spoken with Shannon upstairs?
No.
I don't even know if she's here today, I assume she is, but I didn't ever get up there, so.
Oh, we're waiting, you are aware that the individually we're talking about is back in the pocket.
No, I did not, they were just.
Bill, I don't think I got a copy in your packet of her stuff, if you need it.
Good morning.
Yes, you got it.
How are you?
Oh, yeah.
Department of Human Services, of Humane Services, how are you?
All bad, too. Hey, how are you guys today?
But, well.
Oh, God, I'm glad to know.
I got, um, one thing, I think, Beth, maybe I didn't.
I, actually, I have it in the longest day because I switched her and Lana, some of that.
Uh, I think you're gonna win the prize for having the longest M O U on.
Oh, on, on, uh, in the whole world, but you got that, and they finally got it worked out, and holy moly, could we get it signed, you know?
I tried to read it, I did read it, I didn't understand two-thirds of it, I have no idea what some of these acronyms are, W P R being one of them.
Oh, I don't know, I, you know, and.
Work participation rate.
Yeah, work participation rate, and all of that good stuff, but, um, yes, they have worked on this forever, and my thought on this is, they have looked at it, they took it to state board, I mean, it has gone on forever. And then I liked that this, this county's have sixty days to.
Yeah.
And I didn't even get this until May ninth, I, I, I thought that was marvelous, so, but anyhow, that, that's okay, you guys are meeting, so.
We need to act on this, or?
Yes, we need to have it signed, and I actually have it, cause then I gotta mail it to them, or is it the last page? So, the Chairman would need to sign it, and then the county clerk to the board. She's a little feisty today, what's going on with us?
Froggy.
It's, it's Thursday, or?
No, she's running for office, she just gets this way.
Are you really? Wow, well, I'm gonna say who I'm not gonna vote for.
Wanna get paid.
Yeah.
So, they really want this back by June thirty?
They do, they really want it back by June thirty, it took them forty years to get it to us, but we have to have it back by June thirtieth, yeah.
And the cover letter, yeah, the cover letter makes it very clear, just sign it.
Pretty much, it does, just sign it, they have looked at it a hundred times, and this is what they've come up with, and it's gonna be great, so just sign it.
This is a heck of an M O U.
Oh, and, no, they're gonna give you sixty days, they say that, but they're not gonna give that to you, I was like, ooh.
You're coming.
So, is there anything different on this one than what the other one was?
Oh, well.
It's always the same thing?
Well, no, this is the new and improved, because they took out some of the stuff where, was making the counties maybe have to do stuff, and so they took that all out, and now, you know, the counties will not be sanctioned if they don't get some of this done, and, yeah, and so, that's what it was all about, and so, now it's revived and, revived, and everybody has agreed to it, so, there we go.
Yeah.
But, yeah, this had to be the longest M O U in.
Oh, man, yeah.
In, in the world, to get this.
And, uh, on that, I guess we'll call it a cover letter, the first.
Yeah, that, yeah, the county letter, agency letter.
The Office Director, I'd like to call attention to that lady's name, I met her at a meeting in Denver, Kai I, or Kai E, or whatever they pronounce that, but, uh, nice, nice lady, but I just, and I actually asked her about that first name, so, Kai E, I think, is how she pronounced it.
Oh, okay.
Cowell.
Yep.
But anyway, uh, what is the group's pleasure on the M O U?
I don't think we really have a lot of choice, I think it's necessary, um, uh, so, I think we need to approve it. And I think it's one of those things that just needs to be done, so I'll go ahead and I'll move that we approve the memorandum, of memorandum of understanding uh, between the state, uh, Colorado Department of Human Services and the Board of Custer County Commissioners, as presented.
Oh, second, and let's discuss it for quick, sing.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the, uh, C D H S and Custer County, discussion.
So, Clint, turn, do you have a copy?
Yeah, I do.
Take a look at the san- sanctions.
What page are you on that?
That's page eight and six.
Say that, oh, yeah, there's.
Did you make second that?
Yes, I did, I did.
Thank you.
So, I, I just wanna make sure, what are we liable for here? As a county? If she doesn't do her job?
Oh, wow, you know.
I don't know if this changed over the last one we signed, did, did.
Oh, the last one was.
Sanctions are different.
Oh, yeah, the, the sanctions were worse last time than they are now.
Are they?
They've taken the sanction, you know, that's what it says here, that, uh, sanction, sanction should not be imposed on a county for failing to adhere to state regulation that conflicts with federal law, da, 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 we've never had a sanction for failure to do.
Or to meet, like, if you're saying, uh, payment error rate guidelines, if you haven't done that right.
Right.
Then what happens to us?
Yeah. It, it's just, now, last page six there.
So, that.
I mean, I suppose theoretically, I suppose they can do something to the county's practical.
That last paragraph C, looks like it, uh, that last item two is, says the county will not be liable for that portion of this.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a problem, they're gonna deal with it, and a sanction, any kind of sanction would be an absolute last resort.
We've never been in trouble before?
No, they, they, you know, if they say you're not doing it right, they tell you, you need to start.
Clean up your acronym.
We have to do a, uh, corrective action plan on how we're gonna fix it, and da, 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 and that type of stuff, but no, we've never had a sanction on them.
So, it looks pretty straightforward, Clint?
Yeah, it's one of those things that you just get regularly from the state, sign it, don't question it, don't try to change anything around.
Cause you never get it done anymore.
A year and a half.
A year and a half just to get that, huh?
A year and a half, over the past year and a half, it took them to, to revise this M O U. So, yeah.
Further discussion, public comment, hearing none, will proceed to vote, all in favor of approving the M O U between, uh, Colorado Department of Human Services and Custer County, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carries? Do you have the hard copy?
I do, there's the signature page, and then this is the rest of it, and then I have to make a copy, I don't know if you need a copy of it, yes, and then. And then I'll make a copy for us, and then I will mail it off, because to... Here, and we will get it out.
Uh, and before we move on, so I don't forget, I want to publicly congratulate Lauren, her department. They received a CSTAT plaque at the CCI Summer Conference, and...
Yeah, they sent me a...
Did you see the hard copy?
Yes, he brought me the hard copy.
Oh, you already, you already...
He dropped it off, and then this is what they had sent me earlier, this just tells, tells what we got it in. Because we did all of those, so if you guys want to look at it, we met the standards and all of that, so that's why we get the award.
Did we get it last year?
We usually do, uh, one year we got it where the gal from, um, the state came down, Julie Crowe at that time was the deputy director. She came down and made a presentation to us, because we were one of the top ten counties.
I think there was only twenty-two this time.
Yeah, and we were one of the top ten counties that year, so.
I think we were top twenty.
Yeah, we were in the top sixty-four. So anyway, I just wanted to say congratulations.
And how much money comes along with it?
None.
Well, none to her, they gave us fifty dollars cash.
Ten cents won't buy a cup of coffee.
Oh, yeah.
I just went ahead and kept the cash, because I had to go up and accept.
That's right, they did, didn't they?
That's not true. CSTAT, could you explain that?
No, uh, I'd have to really get, CSTAT, the major, I'm not sure what's, I, I'd have to look at exactly what that means, because...
So you got an award for just...
Meetings.
Meetings. Yeah.
Meeting, guys, I can show you this thing, it's...
It has some description.
It has descriptions of it.
So she can publish that, and you oughta take a picture of her.
No, no, we didn't, no, we did that, we did that when we were in the top ten, we do not do it now.
We weren't here when you were in the top ten, see.
Still, that's, that's a big deal, Laura.
Meeting the guidelines and...
They, uh, they made everybody come up front and got their picture taken for the...
Oh, did they? Oh, okay, oh, yeah.
And unfortunately, we only had Tom there.
Well, we had Bill and Tom.
What I mean is, he got the pictures, too bad, but it should've been me.
You, oh, well, I was gonna say, you could've gone up and got it.
I could, but I, I thought Tom was, he had a better looking tie that day.
He refused, and I said, the only reason he did that, now I have to make sure the plaque gets back to Custer County in good health and presented to the appropriate department.
I took a picture, so I can...
So they explained it in our conference the other night, that, uh, they have numerous measures, which some are articulated there on that document, and to hit the seventy-five percent accomplishment on those measures, you have to recognize those.
You have to be above a like, that is just what, timeliness and new adult applications, you know, they have a time, well, food, food especially. You have to be ninety-five percent meet that for so many months out of the year. And, and so, all of those have specific timelines that you have to meet.
It's an efficiency of doing your job.
It is, because, because, CSTAT came along, Reggie Bicker brought that in, but there was some counties, larger counties, who were taking, we have processing guidelines, where for food, you know, you have thirty days, where other categories, you have forty-five. Depends on the category to get applications processed. Counties were not doing that months, you know, three months, and they should've had, they still don't have a determination. And so even though you have an MOU, saying you'll do some of this stuff, it wasn't...
You weren't held in account.
Yeah, and so, I don't know, Reggie came up with this, and I mean, we get, every month, I get a CSTAT report that shows where we were, where, you know, you know, and then they'll say you were, or, we also get weekly reports on food and some of these things. You, you know, you met your timeliness, but you had, you had fifteen cases that were timely done and one that wasn't, and then I always wanna know which one wasn't done timely, so, and half the time, I, we had one, one day, and we're like, what? We don't even know who this is, we don't have an application. Well, what happened was, um, somebody applied for Medicaid at a presumptive eligibility site, which they can, but they also check, uh, food assistance, which you can't do. So when it came through, we never got the application, because you're not, you can't apply for food at a, at an MA site. So all of a sudden, it's just showing up, and we're, we're like, what the heck is this? We didn't have an application, we didn't have anything. And I brought that up to a, to the, one of the gals that I had a conversation with about food, and she goes, MA sites are not supposed to take those applications. And I said, well, of course they can't, because none of the, none of the information for food assistance is on that application. So we have weird stuff like that happen, so we just try to track it, because I wanna know which one we didn't get timely.
You're doing a good job.
So, but thank you.
So, were you in the top twenty, or there was twenty counties that got it?
Twenty counties that got it.
That got it.
Yeah, twenty counties that got it.
Out of sixty-four.
Out of sixty-four, twenty counties received this award, this CSTAT award.
And they, they also track how, how consistent, how many years in a row, and there's only one county, I think, that's won it every time.
Oh, really? It's probably a small county, too, a very small county.
I think it was medium size.
Yuma County has received that award every year.
Oh, okay, so you was...
So give them a call and find out what they're doing.
Oh, they probably have more help. We gotta get somebody hired, because, yeah, that's my next thing to do after I get done doing all of the, it, it, we're at the end of the fiscal year. So all contracts need to be renewed, everything else, I've got two grants that I have to get done by the end of this month. One of them, it won't even let me into the site, I have a call, I have to put a ticket in with the state, because it's not letting me, it's telling me the firewall's prohibiting it or something, I need to be able to get in there to fix that. But anyhow, so anyhow, we're just busy in heck, but we're gonna try next week to get the ad in the paper for Lauren's position. So that will help us, because we got a lot going on, and we're having to do his job and everything else, and it's crazy right now. We've stamped it for me, and everything is just...
I tried to look up CSTAT on...
Yeah, and I can't remember exactly what it says.
Website.
Yeah, what it actually stands for, I don't know, I'd have to look.
Must be Colorado's...
Oh, did you? Okay. We always just call everything CSTAT.
I did a Google search, CSTAT, Colorado CSTAT, I found it.
Yeah.
What's it stand for?
Uh, Colorado Statistics.
It's an organization that tracks statistics.
No, I'm sure they do, yes, I don't know.
As they described the other evening, that the governor was on a big rampage about improving all these performance levels.
Yeah.
Seemed like it's working.
Yeah.
Congratulations, hired somebody to track every state aid.
You know, we are required, but it's, it's still weird, because we are required for, uh, kids who we have in foster care, that, uh, they are seen on a monthly basis when they are in foster care. And if we don't, if, and if we don't do that, we also have foster care review that comes and reviews our cases, that makes sure everything's where it's supposed to be, and if we don't have that done, we gotta ding. But we got a report last year, or a thing came down, you would be amazed at the counties that don't go see these kids on a monthly basis, and we're like, how do they not just get sanctioned? It's, it's amazing, it, we're just like, how do they not do that? How do they get away with that? And, and it's, you know, and we are required to do that, it's to make sure that the kid is not being abused in the foster home and everything's good. And we actually have to see them in that home, so I, it's amazing to me that we have these regulations and still, it's not being done, so. Anyhow, I wanna talk to you about Fremont County, um, Crossroads in Pueblo. Did you get this thing about the detox center? Okay.
Wearing us out.
Okay, okay, so I got in, so I went down, when they had the little meeting in Fremont, and the guy from Crossroads was there and talked about, you know, he thought you would have to have at least twenty beds to be able to make this go down there. Really nice guy, very knowledgeable, uh, but anyhow, um, they, Fremont County said they had a place over in the hospital, they had a sober unit over there, and they went over there and checked it out, and they all said, yeah, that, thought that would be great, so they wanted a letter of support, which I sent a letter of support. Now, today, I don't know, I got an email that said, uh, Crossroads, that they have submitted a proposal to ask for point for funding. Did you get this one? Yeah, and they don't wanna do it? Okay, so, I'm just bringing it up, and I don't know, I mean, for, what we have used before has been Crossroads, you know, because for us, it's either Pueblo or, or Canyon, because Chaffee doesn't have one either. Chaffee was there too, because they don't have one, and it's, it would be closer for Chaffee to go to Fremont than it is for us, because we're basically about the same distance.
So is this for us to, um, uh, ask for someone to go into detox, a location to let them go?
Well, if somebody...
I mean, I've read twenty-five emails, and I'm still so confused.
Yeah, and I was confused at the meeting too, but, um, if we wanted somebody to go, if they're court ordered to go into detox, that's a court thing.
Right.
Um, mostly, this is for people who volunteer to go into.
Really?
They also have, they also have volun- voluntary, you know, I mean, they'll do both court order, if, if somebody voluntarily wants to go into detox. Because there was a, a guy from the police department there, his concern was that they were gonna see an increase in their calls, because you're gonna have people going into detox and then walking out, and he said, that's gonna increase our calls, and he goes, so it's a locked facility, and they said, no, it's not really. You know, if they choose to voluntarily go in, they can voluntarily, voluntarily go out. Now, if you have somebody that's court ordered, obviously, they're gonna keep them there. And so he was concerned about that, you know, and they said, well, if you, you know, I guess if somebody from our county went down and went in there voluntarily, and then just came out and was on the street in Canyon, maybe that would increase their caseload, but, you know.
It's their job.
But, yeah, but, yeah, you know, and they're saying, well, I, you know, and they're saying in Pueblo, they don't see that, you know, most of these people, if they're there voluntarily, most of them stay, and if they don't, they just walk out, they're not causing a problem, so I don't know.
And is this detox for just alcohol, or alcohol and, um...
Well, alcohol and both, both, yeah, it, it's a detox for that. And then if they, once they get them detoxed, and all it is, is just to get them so that they're not, more alcohol, because alcohol has a bigger problem, and when, if they try to quit, because they can go in convulsions and they can die. Not so much from drugs, which is a odd thing, but that's how that is. So they want them at detox if they're gonna try to become sober, so they can monitor them, so that they don't have to worry about some of these issues that happen with that. But once they, they're sober, and if they still need treatment, they move them out of detox. Then they're gonna go into Rock Mountain Behavioral Health, or whatever, or a private place, or whatever, to, to finish it. But this is just to get them sober.
So what's the issue we care about? What, what are we worrying about with, with this now?
Well, oh, they want money.
I know they do, but so, so what's the issue, uh, if we don't, or we do, what, what?
Well, what is the issue? Uh, you know, um, good question, because I don't know how many people actually from here go.
I was gonna ask, yeah.
I, and I don't know.
Do you know how many we've ever sent down on purpose, or?
I, we've never, we have never sent anybody down, but the sheriff's office, the court may have sent people down, you know, uh, we don't really have the authority to send anybody down unless they're working with, with a child well...
It's voluntary, I don't know why.
And it's voluntary.
That's their problem.
Yeah, it's voluntary, and so, I can understand why Fremont wants to do it, so they can keep it in the county. I can understand why Chaffee wants to do it, because it's closer, it's closer for them for detox. For us, where we can send them to Crossroads. Yeah, where they're already established, you know, so I don't know, I, yeah, I would think, yeah. I went to the meeting just to find out about it, because the gal from Fremont County DHS sent me the information and said, we're real excited about getting it in here, and so I went and just kinda listened, and I'm thinking, I don't know how much, you know, how beneficial this would be for us, because it's just a place to get them sober, so.
Do we have to act on anything?
No, no, you don't, and the gal...
They emailed this, but...
And then, yeah, yeah, that would be nice, yeah.
Just hit spam.
And then, uh, this, uh, I don't know if you got this one, this one was some, from Sunny Bryant, she's a...
Yeah.
Did you, who's this, Crossroads, because we don't have a clue, how, I mean, they didn't, couldn't give us a, them a budget on how much this was gonna cost. And there was a commissioner there from Fremont County at that meeting, and, uh, this, Fremont had a lot, and then I was there, and then Chaffee County had a guy from DHS, the director, and, uh, the county commissioner there, knows who was that. And most, everybody else was from Fremont County, going on about that. So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that, and, but, yeah, it, and they're right, until they can tell, give us a budget, anybody a budget, you're not gonna even know, and, but I would, yeah, talk to the sheriff's department and find out what they think the big need is, you know, how many people are actually going down, and if it's voluntary, so.
Yeah, I mean, they talk about the regional thing, well, I get it, but...
I said, the only thing that I could, yeah, it, yeah, and the only thing that I could see that could be beneficial is if Crossroads doesn't have any beds, then there would be another place to, you know, for a bed. And that would be the only thing that I could see for us that would be that, that helpful with it. But I just wanted to make sure you guys had this stuff, okay? Because, yeah, that's, I, I figured you, I figured you had been, because I think I got it, are you probably in this, probably in this email?
Hmm, we are.
Stream here that went on for life, and I didn't read them all, so, but...
Can I ask just a, kind of an off-the-wall question on your report?
Oh, okay.
I may have asked this question before, so forgive me if I don't remember, uh, the LEAP program.
Uh-huh.
It looks like, on average, we're helping with the LEAP program, uh, ten, fifteen, eighteen people, twenty people, and in February, we had a hundred and forty-eight.
Well...
And I'm sure I asked this question before.
Well, that...
What, what went on there?
That's because in, um, January, we do our, well, actually, we do, we do a payment in November, we do a payment in December, and then we do one in January, and most of those people get a second payment, and that happens in February. So, so they're getting a second payment in February, and then anybody that applied in the month of February is getting a payment too.
And that's why November's the same type of thing, right?
Right, right, and then, and then in March, anybody that applies after February, they're gonna get the same amount of benefit, they're just gonna get it in one payment.
I understand.
And so, that's why it looks so funny, but, yeah, if you look at November, and, yes, yeah, that's so weird. But in November, we probably, we, in November, we did put on a hundred and twenty-seven households, because we did it October and, and November. And we get the bulk of them there, and then for the, yeah, for then in February, we're looking at those hundred and twenty-seven, the fourteen, the twenty, and anything else that came in in February. So that's why it looks so weird.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, that was an easy one, I could answer that one, sometimes, yeah, my eye. I know, because it...
I knew I asked a performative.
Yeah, well, you're not gonna remember that, because it's not a, in, big important thing there, but that's, that's why that looks so funny there. And we did, LEAP is over now, and, um, they did a, one last payment. I'm not sure we had anybody that got a payment, if they, if they applied right at the end of April, they may have got a payment in May, because we, they missed cut off. But also, they did a two hundred dollar supplemental payment to everybody that received LEAP, because they didn't, because the winter was mild, and they did, they had leftover money, so they did that. So a payment went out the end of May for two hundred dollars for anybody that had received LEAP benefit.
How much was that?
State, statewide.
Sure, they could've used it.
Yeah, so, that's with that. So, I don't have any other big thing, unless you guys have any questions about any of the reports or anything, or you wanna go over them, or are we all okay?
Can I ask about filling the vacant position that you have, Ron's position? Is the requirement that you have a college degree in social work?
No.
What, what kinda, and I'm just curious.
No, not, not on that position. I'll have to look, because it's probably, I'm thinking they just probably need a high school education on that one. Because what we're gonna, what we're gonna do with them, they're gonna be working with our, our Colorado Works people, and they have to do a, an assessment and a plan with them and that type of stuff, so there'll be a case manager there. We're also gonna have them take over the child support that we have, we're getting so much of it, and Rhonda does that, and it's, we try, twin, trying to keep cases going, because we're seeing an increase in caseload, that's becoming too much. So we're gonna have them do the child support, we're gonna have them do all that case managing stuff, and take over the commodities, and...
So you would, you would entertain interviewing someone without this experience and then train them?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you had the right person?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. And so I have to look up what the guidelines are for all of that since I haven't done that for a while. And, um, but it's not like hiring a caseworker where they have to have a degree.
That's all I was, that's what I was curious.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have that. Okay, anything else from anybody?
I don't think so. Good, thank you, ma'am.
Oh, well, thank you, guys.
Thanks for being here.
Anything you need from us when I'm not giving you?
Uh, no, oh, I did wanna say, we moved, we moved Stacy and Linda's office yesterday and while we were doing it, we moved out file cabinets that were full of old cases and took them downstairs. And, um, Vernon and Ed helped us with that. Vernon came over, took up the computers and stuff, he helped move stuff around. They, both those two were in, Ed, Ed, we took those file cabinets downstairs, that was really something in their, in their room.
Did you take him down full?
Oh, well, we tried that, so we ended up taking the drawers out, but we got this one and we have them in that little room. And on the wall in this corner, and I said, I think one will fit there, and Ed says, I think both of them will go there, but on the wall, there was a two by four.
Right.
On the wall that had nails sticking out of it and we were trying to put-
Did you scratch it?
No, but Ed backed in there to put that in there and got on that nail. He did, it's, he never bled. We checked it out. But he-
Boy has no blood.
And so he goes, you, you know, that file cabinet would go in there. Well, at first he got mad, so he went and got a hammer and he pounded those two nails in. And there's up on the wall above it is another two by four with nails in it. I don't, I don't know, and Vernon says, so then Ed says-
Must be coat hangers.
I don't know, and it's down in this little bitty disgusting room, you know, and, um, so Ed says, that file, that other file cabinet won't go because of that two by four. So he went home and he got his saw and just cut that board off. And so Vernon says, yeah, he's gonna cut that board off and when he does, the whole, whole courthouse is gonna fall down. But he did, he went and cut that board off and that file cabinet just slipped right in there, so now we had a little bit of space in there. But we tried to do that and that wasn't working, so we took those, we took the drawers out and set them down there and then we put the file cabinets down there and then shoved the drawers back in.
Those guys helped you.
Oh, my gosh.
He's an old rugby player, he ain't gonna bleed just because he gets poked by a nail, it's gonna take a while.
Oh, my gosh, I was like, all of a sudden, he's backing that in and all of a sudden, he's going, oh, my God, wait, 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 we're like, what?
He goes, this nail. I'm hung up.
Yeah, but, yeah, and Vernon, being big as he is and tall, he just wrestles stuff around. Oh, it was awesome. I just wanted to let you guys know.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate that.
What a great job those guys did. Thank you, guys.
All right, ma'am, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's pass those kudos on to those two.
Yeah. Okay, let's see, I think that concludes our, oh, we're still extension.
Um, and just to let you know, I called up there and Diana said that Shannon is on a leave of absence.
That's true, she had told me that and I got an email from her, actually, yes. She had some family issues, uh, where she came from, so I apologize, I should have informed you about that. So I think that concludes our staff reports. I'm not sure where Mr. Canada went, but. Can you tell him we're still in session, please?
She coming?
Unfinished business gentleman?
She's on a leave of absence.
Oh, oh, that's right, man, okay. No.
I do not have any, uh-
Do we have to quit early?
I don't believe there's any new business to come through the groups. Public comment. Don't think we have anything scheduled for executive sessions. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Opposed nay, motion carries.